And begin by reading the agenda. I don't see any public present, but public comments is item one. Minutes of December fourteenth need to be approved. And then we get into a budget discussion, a review for fiscal year twenty-two. Determine other meeting dates as necessary. For Richard's sake, is Richard on there?
He is, yes.
Okay. We have Chayla, Sikora, Dick France. We have Ron, Jim Kalkine, Fran, Matthew Baikowski, Laura, Nicole, Kate Abbott, Bill Basic, Frank Barnes, Cat TV, I'm not sure who the person is there, but they are represented. Scott McInnany, Renee, Nick Gault, Jackie Kelly, and is the 1163, is that Renee?
It is. So I'm connected on the computer and my phone because I don't have a mic or camera on the computer I'm using.
So that's who we have present, Richard. Hope you get that because you're muted. I don't see any members of the public. If the agenda is okay with everybody, we'll move to item two, minutes of December fourteenth.
I'll move the minutes.
Motion from Fran, second from Scott. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes of December fourteenth, twenty-twenty, signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
No abstentions, no opposed. Motion carries, minutes are accepted, and we're on to fiscal twenty-two, uh, twenty-twenty-two budget review.
Renee, I've made you co-host, I don't know if you can share them?
So I was able to join Zoom via the app on this computer earlier, and it wouldn't open. So now I'm on the web browser. I apologize in advance, everyone, because this is, um, I'm completely out of sorts on this machine. So I, uh, let's see, what is it gonna let me share?
And you? All the other administrators are co-hosts, so if you want to send something to them, would they be able to share it easier?
Well, I want to share my entire screen, but it won't let me. That is really gonna bum me out because I need to have multiple windows open. Oh, boy.
There you go.
We got something?
So that is, um, let's see, let's start here. So I was hoping to be able to, um, to kind of have this like a side-by-side screen or like a top and bottom like we did last time. Um, so all of these documents have been posted on the website. I'm, I, um, I didn't have a chance to email them out, but they are there with the agenda and the meeting minutes. If you, um, want to have the, um, the narrative to go along. Um, it's gonna be pretty, pretty simple actually tonight because I really haven't made a whole lot of changes. I've done a lot of review from our first meeting. Um, I essentially went through and double-checked all of our staffing, um, their placements on the pay scales, and then their current benefit elections. So when you look at the narrative, um, you'll see that it's pretty much all the same text. However, whatever I changed or updated is indicated in blue italics. So in looking at the budget by category, which is the first item I have up here, um, there's a decrease in salaries, and that is basically because of the review, um, that I went through to make corrections, as well as, um, there was a reduction that was identified, um, earlier this week in our English language learner category, and that, um, the demand or, you know, our projected need, um, sorry, kind of pop up about my sharing here. The projected need for next year, we had a one-point-five FTE, um, budgeted, but we think we'll be able to get by with the one-point-oh, so we did reduce the point-five FTE position. Um, so that is contributing to that reduction in the salaries from draft one as well. Um, and then the benefit, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Did you say a reduction from one-point-five FTE to point-five?
Um, we reduced it by point-five, so it's just a one-point-oh position now.
I'm only getting through the screen, so, uh, and I did not go to the website today. I was sort of looking for an email, so I'm uninformed. I think they call that ignorance, but anyway.
No, um, that's Renee struggling with computer issues. That's what we can chalk it up to. Um, so, uh, in addition to, you just had kind of recap from, um, the first, the first meeting when we reviewed the changes in positions, um, we have incorporated what the personnel, um, incoming personnel will be from BVSU into the SVSEU, um, which includes the existing special education staff, um, bus drivers, and the interim assistant superintendent with associated support staff there. So that, those are in addition to what our existing structure is. Um, on the flip side, we have some reductions. So we have reduced the receptionist here at our central office by, um, essentially taking our HR and finance clerk position that we added this year, and we actually have that person sitting out there kind of doing double, triple duty. And then we've also, um, identified some vacant positions that can be reduced in next year's, uh, budget, which is three vacant special education teachers and five special education paraprofessionals. So, um, so we have a one-point-oh administrative staff coming off. We have a point-five ELL teaching staff coming off, three-point-oh special education teachers, and five-point-oh FTE for special education paraprofessionals being reduced. Um, so even though we don't have collective bargaining agreements in place yet for FY twenty-two, I do have factors in here for potential salary increases, uh, which are clearly being offset by the reduction in position. So, yeah. Then, yeah, the next item down, um, the benefits was another, uh, pretty significant reduction from, um, the first pass at this FY twenty-two budget. And that is essentially due to, um, me going through and just double-checking to see what, what folks have elected right now. And, um, if you recall, last year, when we were preparing for the expansion of the health insurance, um, coverage, uh, to our support staff to include, um, the employer portion being paid to, not just the employee portion, which it had been for a number of years, um, but now it includes employee plus spouse, employee plus children, and then family. We really weren't sure what we were going to be looking at in terms of, um, having people, you know, um, expand their level of benefits that they currently had. So we have roughly a hundred and sixty-five, um, educational support personnel, and of those, only about twelve ended up changing. So, um, when we expanded in the, in the spreadsheet, some of the, the links got a little wonky, so I went sure, went back through, double-checked and make sure, um, everything was kosher, and that's why that is also, um, contributing to that reduction. Um, then the contracted services along with, uh, tuition, these are just some tweaks. Um, Kate and I have been continuing to work on, um, the special education budget, so there's some minor adjustments there based on, um, what we're anticipating for next year. And then I think everything else is pretty much, um, the same from draft one. But when we get down to the bottom, you can see that we're down to an increase of only about fifty-five thousand dollars or less than a, um, point-two percent. So are there questions that I could answer on any of these? And actually, I guess I can, if that helps.
Renee, Fran, Kenny, does that budget include the clinicians that we have at different elementary schools? Like Shasberry, Ben Al, North Bennington, uh, maybe we don't?
Fran, it does include some of them, um, if they are funded through special education, but we do have some behavior specialists, or, um, some of them have different, um, titles, but some of them are funded locally, so you'll, you'll see those, um, also in the MAU and, um, the AEST budget. And some, some of our clinicians are, um, servicing our students as employees of the SU, and then we actually have some that are contracted services as well, um, through a number of, um, vendors. Um, Soliant and United Counseling Service, I think, are the ones that, um, we have current contracts with now. So I know it's, it's a, it's a lot to digest, it's a lot of numbers, but I do want to point out that all the data that you're seeing here, so the actuals for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, along with the budget, um, this current year's budget and the proposed for next year, is inclusive of the SU and what's coming in from Baton Kill. So, um, Bill was kind enough to share his historical data, so I was able to pull all that in. So you're seeing kind of an all-encompassing picture of, um, you know, the prior three years actuals, this current year's budget, um, with both SUs combined, and then what the SVSU budget would be for next year.
Renee?
Yeah.
Can you answer, just for anybody who may be watching, you know, if I look at two thousand and eighteen to now, or, um, to any, any prior year to now, and I see the salary, salary and/or, and benefits, um, the not, the increase is staggering. Help, help, help me remember and help others understand how we got there.
Um, there, there have been some shifts, and boy, I'm thinking back that it may have been, um, I can't remember if it was two years ago, maybe we brought on, um, the local parents. Yeah, they, they all came under the SU, so they, a number of them were employed at the local level, and then, um, through negotiations, all of those employees became SU employees.
It was from negotiation, Scott, that they all became employees of the SU. So it was a cost shift to the SU budget.
It was being paid for, no matter how you look at it, it was just which bucket did it fall into?
Right. So the, the local districts are still going to be paying for it. It'll just be through an assessment now as opposed to them employing, um, the people directly. And the, the difference that you're seeing in the three years actuals to the budgets is, um, unfortunately, we, we have significant, um, vacancies, right? So, you know, you can see we actually spent, you know, eleven-point-three million dollars in eighteen, um, and comparing that to this year's budget of, um, thirteen-point-nine million, we're pretty much going to be holding steady, um, with our proposed budget, but that is being attributed to the reduction in positions that, um, have been identified that, um, we think we will be able to, um, service our students without those additional positions.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm looking at it from a person who's from, on the outside, I still see it's a, you know, three-and-a-half million dollar increase over that time, and I'm wondering how. Uh, and then when you look at it from the benefits side, um, even more substantial. So what, how did we have, where did we get that jump there on that, on the benefits side, especially from, um, two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one, but even more substantial when you go all the way back to two thousand and eighteen?
Well, we, we are carrying, um, you know, budgets for, uh, the vacant positions, so that's why you're seeing a, a variance between the, the actual expenses versus what, um, what's being budgeted. And what we found this year is with the number of contracted services that we've had come on, we've actually pulled some of the funding out of the salaries and benefits lines and shifted them, um, to the contracted service line. So even though this is, you know, how we're building the budget, it may not necessarily be how we end up spending the budget. So we kind of have to look at it as one big pot of money, and we, you know, shift it around as we need to to make sure that we're filling, um, filling the positions and filling the need, um, of the students in the schools. So, um, this year we definitely, um, I can tell you, you know, that, that thirteen-point-nine million dollars in salaries, a significant amount of that money has been shifted into the contracted service line, which you'll end up seeing in the FY twenty-one actual, um, and that'll be next year.
Thank you.
Sure. So along with, um, this version, um, there's also the, basically the same data, but it's just broken out in, um, another format. So when you look at the PDF of the draft two budget, the first page, um, will be this by category. The next two pages are the narrative, um, and then the fourth page, I guess it would be, is, um, where this version of the budget comes in. So essentially, this is taking all of the information that we just saw by budget category and collapsing it all down and breaking it out by department or specialty. Um, so your direct instruction here, this would include, um, like our early education, um, ELL, that's our English language learners. So you can see that the reduction, actually, I should back up. I think I mentioned this last time around, the reduction that we're seeing, um, um, the, the first line, um, for the eleven-oh-one direct instruction, this is a reallocation of moving one of our staff to, um, the appropriate line here in, in the mentor teaching line. So we're still working to implement the new chart of accounts and then getting, um, the budget to align with that. So definitely been a work in progress. But so this kind of, you know, goes through, uh, department by department, or the categories that we use or the functions as the agency of education refers to them as. Um, the reduction you're seeing in special education, as I mentioned before, is the reduction in, um, the positions, but there's also, um, some tuition that we were able to, um, I think Kate could probably speak to it, um, better than I, but I know that, I think there were some students that were in out-of-district placements that have, um, returned. So some savings that we're seeing there.
What happens if these out-of-district placements, um, become local issues and have to go back to out-of-district placement? Does that ever happen? And what's, how does that affect the budget if it happens mid, midstream?
I can talk to, speak to that one, Renee, if you'd like.
Sure.
Thank you, Kate.
Sure. So we've had, um, some children who were in a residential placement move out of the, out of Vermont and into New York, and so there was a reduction in one of our, um, high-cost placements. However, um, there is, there is a kind of a, regardless of whether or not the child attends an in-house program or a program at a different school, um, high-cost children are high-cost children. You have to prepare for their needs. So even if the child was to, if a child were to move, for example, from a, a private placement to a public school site, we would still basically plan for that child to need extensive counseling, specialized transportation, um, specialized instruction, um, so the cost doesn't change in the first year of the child's placement. It's still expected to be a high-cost, um, child, just the location of service delivery. So if the child does need to move back to a more intensive or restrictive environment out of district, um, there's funding there to prepare for that. The ones that are very, very difficult that you can't always foresee are when a residentially-placed student moves into the district, and those, um, those sometimes do require additional, um, funding, but you never know if a child will move in or not. So, um, does that help answer the question a little bit?
Yeah, I think, um, it's an unknown. I, I understand that. I just wondered what kind of impact that had, but I think you answered that.
Um, so one of the other things that, um, has been asked, um, last year, maybe even the year before, um, was how our grants support, um, our students and our staffing. So I just wanted to share, um, this isn't included in the budget, but it's more, um, essentially what we have going on this year because we, um, basically have to budget for whatever our allocation is, which we won't learn until the spring, um, for the following school year. So CFP, um, and can, can you see the SVSU CFP grant budget expenditures? Is that sharing on your screens now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so this is the consolidated federal programs, which is commonly referred to as title funding. Um, so I've essentially taken our budget that we have currently, um, in our grants management system that's been approved by the agency of education, and kind of broken it down to mirror, um, how we're looking at the FY twenty-two budget. So you can see, um, we have it broken out by budget category, so salaries, um, employee stipends, benefits, contracted services, travel and transportation supplies, and then indirect costs. At the bottom of the pages, I've given you a brief kind of explanation as to what those categories are or what they may include. Um, so that's one way of looking at the CFP. And then the second page of that PDF, and again, this is all, um, posted, uh, on the website along with the agenda. Um, I've broken it out by, by function that we have in our, uh, grant as well. And then there's some associated descriptions at the bottom as well. So CFP is our, as again, it's our title funding. Um, it supports a number of interventionists. Um, we have some, uh, positions that are actually what we refer to internally as split-funded. So it could be a couple of sources of grants that are funding positions, or it could be a portion of local and a portion of a grant being funded. Um, so we have early intervention teachers, um, interventionists that are supporting, um, parentally-placed students at Sacred Heart and Grace Christian. Um, we have tutoring. Our equity coordinator position is now carried in Title IV. Um, we have a number of coaches that serve at school levels as well as SU-wide, so those are paid for, um, through the CFP grant. Um, but a, a big portion of it is attributed to professional learning as well as parent and family engagement, um, which are requirements of, of the title funding. Another one of the, um, grants that we have that support, um, some of our staffing is IDA, which is for special education. So I, again, I kind of mirrored this after we have, um, or how I have the FY twenty-two budget set up, so by budget category, um, with some descriptions as to what positions are actually being supported there. And then the final page of that PDF, um, is for the IDA broken out by function. So that information is there for your review. Um, there was a question at the last meeting too about staffing. So also up on the website, um, I prepared a current position list. So when you look at this, and yes, it is eight pages long of staffing, um, one of the items I can, um, I thought ELL was right at the top. Am I not, isn't it right here? So, uh, for instance, this position right here, um, control code four-forty-nine at point-five, even though that's in the current year's budget, it is not currently in the draft two of FY twenty-two proposed budget. Um, also, as you scroll through, um, these positions, the existing, um, uh, special education teachers are also still there, um, as well as, uh, the paraprofessional positions that we're, um, proposing to reduce. And you can see, you know, the school-wide intervention teachers, and, and that final column that I have is, is their funding source. So some of them are, when we say locally funded, that means funded through the budget, um, that we're presenting to you tonight. The split-funded would be either split through a couple of different grants or local-funded and grant-funded, um, just to give you some reference. So that, that is up there for your information and review. And, uh, Bill also put together, um, a list for the Baton Kill Supervisory Union. He said, and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that this would be your existing staff, but also the staff that you are proposing to, um, carry into FY twenty-two, I think with the exception of the treasurer, because that will dissolve and, um, be absorbed by the existing SVSU treasurer.
You are correct.
So that one is just a page long. The other one is eight pages long. Okay, and then what else do I have for you tonight? Are there any questions on any of that so far?
Well, I don't, I don't know when is appropriate to bring this up. Ray Molino, um, contacted me, and I sent you an email to see what, um, you had to address some of his concerns. Uh, I-
We, we reviewed those today, so I think Renee's prepared to, to answer most of those questions.
Well, most of this is, is way over my head. Um, I'm not good at this at all, so I guess I gotta leave that show to you. I don't know how to interpret, um, all the information he sent to me, so if you've got the answers, that's a good thing.
Well, we have an attempt to.
Yeah. So let me see if I can pull up, um, hmm.
Want to pull up his letter, Renee, or?
Um, I was actually gonna pull up the assessment sheet, so. There. Um, you should see a lot of numbers, which are probably difficult to read. Um, there, so this is our assessment. Um, essentially, it's our worksheet, um, that we use here internally in the business office. Um, once the SU budget is set, um, there's a lot of formulas that are kind of going on in the background that are pulling, um, the budget data, applying some offsetting revenues, um, and fund balances, and then applying out the, the cost by proportion of equalized pupils. So one of, uh, Ray's concerns was that, um, when you look at the North Bennington assessment, they, because they're a non-operating district, um, and, you know, don't have staff, and we're not overseeing, you know, a number of items that are occurring in the school district, um, they are, they're paying for admin, the business service or business office, um, their audit, I think he disregarded, and then HR, and then some tech, um, administration. Along with that, the SVU ESD also pays all of those assessments as- Along with that, the SVU ESD also pays all of those assessments as well. And then when we look to determine what the tuition rate is going to be for students that would be coming in to one of the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District schools, we look at the proposed budget, which includes these assessments. So Ray's concern is that the North Bennington graded school district is already paying a portion of admin, of finance, of HR, of tech. And the SVU ESD is also paying for all of those. And those costs are being factored into the tuition rate. So by them paying the tuition that gets set, he's saying essentially they're double paying those assessments. Does that make sense? And I mean, I think he has a very valid argument. I haven't had a chance to kind of dissect the numbers, but I can tell you when I work with Jim Kosis here in my office on setting those tuition rates. And we tend to round them down. So it's not like, you know, there's extra cost in there. So I would have to try to take a deeper dive into Ray's...
Yeah.
You know, how he's done his calculations.
Complicated argument.
Renee, I have a question. And I probably should know this, and maybe I have in the past, but I can't remember now. But where does middle school and high school students that are from North Bennington fall? Do they get in Mount Anthony?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay. So when we say North Bennington, we're just strictly speaking K through six?
Well, they have pre-K, pre-K kids as well.
Okay.
Yep. So this is the data that I've received thus far from the Agency of Education for Equalized Pupils for FY22. I've seen a lot of emails swirling around that there are some concerns with the data that the state has. And Brad, you know, he does a lot of work in putting the equalized pupils together. So this is basically the information that I have, you know, is the best information I have at this point. So the equalized pupils are in these rows here. And you can see just breaking them out proportionately, including Arlington and Sandgate on a couple of them. And then I've taken these and pulled them up here into the various categories. So for next year, Arlington and Sandgate, which I have noted here in blue, if you can see the color differentiation on your screen, they have tied into assessments that will factor into their local Arlington and Sandgate budget. I shared these figures with Bill yesterday, I believe. And he, I think, at first glance, thought they might be lower than what he was anticipating. So it's good news from my perspective, anyway. So, yeah, so when we are looking at the equalized pupils, this is how all of our information gets reported to the state. So even our sixth-grade students in the Bennington area, they end up factoring into the Mount Anthony equalized pupil number. So, and then once they get to seventh grade, it would be the rest of the SVU ESD schools. And then North Bennington would all be in the Mount Anthony equalized pupil numbers.
So you spoke about a deeper dive into North Bennington. What is the result of that deeper dive? Or what do you expect the result to be?
I'm not sure if it will come back to as much money as Ray was thinking. But I do think he has a valid argument that, you know, because North Bennington is paying for these services here and these are being factored into the tuition, which North Bennington is also paying, there is some overlap. So I would be...
I mean, that is one way to see it. And, you know, other board members may feel otherwise because that is our tuition rate. It's not like, you know, we don't have two separate tuition rates, one for North Bennington and one for somebody else, which is what you would be creating if you did, if you were in agreement.
I guess my only question is what changed this year versus another year? Isn't this, is this how?
No.
I think if I can jump in there, I think Ray's communication with me, and I'm not taking sides here, please understand that. But Ray's communication indicates that he should have dealt with this earlier, like last year or the year before, and did not do so and doesn't think it should continue. And I guess my question would be, if you're gonna dive into that, take a look at consideration of his arguments. That's a good thing. I would wonder if any of that affects the budget we'd like to vote on.
It will not affect the budget before you.
Might affect who gets assigned to pay for what, but it won't, you know, someone, if they're paying a little less, you're gonna pay a little bit more. But the budget will be the same.
So it would potentially affect the elementary boards?
Yes.
But that we need to vote on.
But it's, but it's really not, it's not a lot of money, right, Renee? What we looked at today, it's not a lot, it's not a big shift.
No, I mean, it's a few thousand dollars that he's identified. But, you know, the North Bennington budget in and of itself is, you know, relatively small. So a few thousand dollars, you know, adds up for them. But I'm happy to take a look at it. And we can present that to the SVU ESD Board when they consider setting that tuition rate, if they want to have some type of reduction for the possible duplication of assessments. As of right now, we have not only students attending from North Bennington, but we have students from Reed'sboro, Reed'sboro and the Stanford area, I think, tuitioning into Woodford as well. So if we set that tuition rate, it's essentially just gonna be lesser revenue coming into the UEV. But the costs are gonna be the same regardless of whether those kids were tuitioning in or not.
Renee, that's something that I would advocate, though, that we would have. If we set the tuition rate lower, it wouldn't be for Reed'sboro. They wouldn't be paying the lower rate because they're not paying, you know, if you, if you agree with this scenario, they're not paying double fees.
Correct.
So they would pay the higher tuition rate.
Is there a similar situation potentially between, or do we have any kids from tuitioning into Mount Anthony that are sixth graders potentially that are part of SVU ESD that are going to the middle school, like, that are tuitioning in that way? That we would have a similar situation?
Hmm, haven't thought of that that way.
Because I would think that that same logic would apply if we do. I don't know if we do or not. It's just a question. Don't kill me, Renee, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around your question. So it would be a student tuitioning, a potential student tuitioning in to Mount Anthony from outside of the SU?
Yeah, so Sheff's very sixth grader potentially could be going to the middle school or a panel. Because I know we talked about that previously. And now with our current situation, I, it was my understanding that that was something that was being discussed. So I don't know if that's the case, or we made any arrangements for that. But is there any situations where we have elementary students in those schools that go to sixth grade attending the middle school instead of staying at the elementary? And if we don't, then?
Yeah, no, I think that's a question that Jim reviewed with Dina when they were actually looking at the charter, or maybe it's not the charter.
Right, because it was...
The articles that formed...
Agreement, yeah.
That formed Mount Anthony that allows essentially any sixth grader within the union to attend. So we would not be charging them tuition.
So we would not, we would not be tuitioning?
No. That was, that was like discovered new this year as a review. As of a, you know, what, do we charge a sixth grader from North Bennington to go to Mount Anthony? So the question was researched, and no, it's any, any sixth grader from, who belongs to one of the communities of the SU can attend Mount Anthony without being assessed a tuition, which may not have been the practice always in the past. It seems to have been mixed results. But we got a pretty clear ruling from our attorney on that.
Sounds good. So then we don't have a situation.
No, and then I guess kind of just to kind of circle back to the tuition question, I'm not sure if legally we could have two different tuition rates.
So that could be the problem. Because then you would assign, you would give the same courtesy to anybody from Reed'sboro that was going to Woodford. They would get the reduced, the lower rate, correct?
If that's what the board decided to set the rate at, yeah.
So why do you feel we can't have two tuition rates? One for within the SU and one for outside of the SU?
I'm just, I would think we would have to research it.
Yeah, we're thinking on, yeah, on the fly here. Because we'll have to, have to look at it. Because I would say that if the board did this, I could certainly support doing it for, for North Bennington. But to give it to somebody then who wasn't a member of your SU who then was gonna get the, though it's not a lot of money, but it's, it is money.
Right. I guess I'm just, I'm thinking of the structure that the agency has for us to submit what our tuition rates are. And it's kind of set that this is your school district, this is your tuition rate. So, but yeah, we can look into it for sure. And then the other item that Ray was concerned about was how the early education costs are being assessed out. And he was thinking that it was by equalized pupil, but it actually has been by an average of ADM. So that's the way it's been calculated for, for all the time I've been here and prior to me as well. The data was taken out of the information that we receive from the Agency of Education in the equalized pupil file. We take those ADM counts and the pre-K and early special education students. We, those who have been factored at a .46 average of the current year and prior year. And then they actually also averaged the ADM for grades K1, 2, and 3. So that is the way that it has been calculated. I took a look at if we were to remove averaging in the ADM for grades K1, 2, and 3, and it would actually result in North Bennington paying more. So I don't think that's the direction that Ray wants to go in. But I can certainly share that information with him and his Prudential Committee as well. So I think that's about all I have for you this evening. I don't know if there are other questions I can try to answer? Or how the board is feeling about the FY22 budget? I can pull up other documents if you want to take a look at things again, or...
I don't have it in front of me anymore, but what is our end, what is our sum total?
The proposed budget is $29,771,67. Which is an increase of $55,163, which is a .19% increase. Get it back up here for you. Let me probably look at it this way because you can see just about the whole thing, I think.
Nothing that the SVU ESD will do will change that, correct?
There is one position, I believe, that has been proposed to be a reduction, which is a reduction to offset the request for a new behavior specialist. I did not remove that para-position from the SU budget because I wasn't sure which way the SVU ESD Board was gonna go with adding the new position. So, you know, if the SVU ESD Board is, you know, supportive of adding the positions and making that reduction, if the board wanted to vote on this tonight, we certainly could. But we could also revisit it. I think as we did last year, we ended up, there were kind of flip-flop positions that were being requested and reduced that the SVU ESD Board said, nope, we're not adding those paras, pull them out of the SU budget. So we went, we went back and did that.
So what's the board's pleasure here? Do we want to set another meeting based on what happens Thursday at SVU ESD? Or vote to approve this draft?
Renee, can I ask a quick question? You've, you've got great historical information on actuals. How, in the past, how close to budget have you been with actuals? Not having been involved in the budgeting process before? Are your, are you generally? Because if you're taking positions out for special ed now and you have an influx of students, you don't really have a choice. Those, those positions have to be added back in. So you can build a lower budget that may or may not be able to reflect the reality. And I'm just wondering, wondering historically how that has worked in your budget to actual process?
Historically, we, we tend to run surpluses and carry fund balances forward. And it has been heavily attributed to vacant positions and out-of-district placements that didn't actually happen that we planned for, but didn't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Renee, I have a question. I'm not on this little board, but I'm, I'm on the MAU board. And my question to you is, what are the contracted services? And you can just send me a list. You know, you don't have to specify right now.
Okay, yeah, there are, as you can see, a lot.
Well, I guess I wanted, I wanted to look into them because I, you know, some of these same places also ask the taxpayer for the town to support them also. So in a sense, some of them are double-dipping. And I'd like to see if that matches my assumptions.
So you're requesting a list of current vendors that we're paying as contracted services?
Contracted services for students, not vendors per se.
Okay.
In other words, like United Counseling, the Tutoring Center, those types of things?
Yep.
Other questions? Oh, there's Ray. Were you able to get your answers to some of your questions, Ray? And you are muted. Sorry, I misremembered the time of this meeting. I thought it was 6 o'clock, so...
I thought it was six o'clock, so I suddenly realized, looking at the agenda as I was looking at material for this meeting, that I was already late, so.
Well, Renee, uh, is gonna attempt to, uh, address some of your concerns, um, about assessments and, and, uh, the dollar amounts. Um, I think she's gonna contact you.
Yep, that's fine. In fact, I'd be willing to do that tomorrow if she has time, so.
Anything else on budget?
Renee and I went over your questions today, Ray, so I, we could try and schedule a time with you and go through it.
That's fine.
Where do we wanna be, folks? If we wanna accept this budget and move on, then we would need to do so. Um, we have a SVU ESD meeting this Thursday at five, I believe.
Yes.
Um, we don't think at this point that's gonna significantly affect our budget here.
Dick, is it appropriate to make a, make a motion, um, and I realize significant is a, is subjective, but, so we could even put a, put a, put something monetary to it, that, that we, we approve this barring anything greater than whatever, two percent, or, I mean, we're talking about a twenty-nine million dollar budget here, so. Um.
So that's two hundred ninety dollars.
I, I would say, Scott-
I threw that out there, Ray, as an example. It doesn't have to be that.
Yeah, well, it could be, and if it changes, you could instruct us that we have to come back to re-vote it, too.
Yeah, I would, I-
That, that could be, yes.
Yes.
Be efficient.
Actually, barring no concerns from the other boards.
Concerns about the total amount of the budget?
Right.
Yeah.
The total twenty-nine million plus? And this is all over a position that, uh, SVU ESD may add or deduct?
Yes.
Okay. So is this the more inclusive position now? The action of that board may reduce the total amount, is that right?
Correct. It would, it would end up reducing the SVU budget, because it would be a position reduction.
And how much reduction is that?
It's, it's a para position.
Oh, yeah, I'd, I'd vote for this budget and move on.
If that's the case, would you like to make a motion to that effect, Ray?
Sure. I'll second it.
We have, uh, a dollar amount that might be included in that motion.
Sure.
Renee, you wanna read the number?
Yes, um, sorry, pulling it back up again, uh, twenty-nine million, seven hundred seventy-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars.
Will you make your motion to include that number, Ray?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the budget of twenty-nine million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars for fiscal year twenty-two. Um, all, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there opposed? Or abstentions? If none, uh, the motion passes and we approve that budget. Um, do we need to set, uh, any subsequent meeting dates? In case?
Um, Dick, I think, I think we could probably just, just, you know, after the UED meeting on Thursday, if we need to come back, um, you know, we'll just contact the board and see what date, time works.
If that's okay with the board, that sounds good.
Think you need another meeting at this time.
You think we need another meeting, Jim?
I said, I don't think you need another meeting at this time.
Doesn't sound like it to me. Are there other issues to be brought before the board tonight?
Move adjournment.
Ren? I, I, did I hear a motion to adjourn in a second?
Yes, you did.
Fran, Fran came, move.
In Chalat's second.
Yeah. Signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Uh, abstentions? Motion carries, and we are adjourned. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim and Renee. That's a hard word, Jim.